Good evening. It is Monday, December 16th. It is 7:24 and I call the Maple Plain City Council Meeting to order. Please stand and join us in the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am looking for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
I'll second.
Seconded by DeLong. Any further discussion? All in favor of adopting the agenda as is.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Are all in favor. We already did that. I'm sorry. All right. Visitors to be heard.
Feel me, Bobby?
Nope. All right. Next item of business is our consent agenda, which includes approval of the December 9th City Council Workshop Minutes, approval of the November 20th City Council Workshop Minutes, and Resolution 19-1216-01, 2020 polling place. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor, I hate to do this, but can I pull December 9th Workshop Minutes and the Resolution C for quick clarification?
Yes. Okay, with that, I'm looking to approve the November 20th City Council Workshop Minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Fay.
Second.
Seconded by DeLuca. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's go back to the approval of the December 9th City Council Workshop Minutes.
Okay. Bobby, I'm wondering if we can get into line eight in City Communications that we're in the process of publicly posting the RFPs and that City Council will get copies of your narratives. And then, number two would be, is there any way to wordsmith the fire department job description information? I found it very confusing. I guess prior to the, tonight, it was clarified on the five minutes. I don't recall talking about five minutes last Monday. And then, response time needed to be at the fire station to be illegible for employment? Do you mean legible for employment?
No, I think I have a typo there.
Okay, okay. And that's all I had on those two.
Sure.
Just the wordsmithing and then the addition of the RFP posting.
Got it written down.
Thank you.
So with that addition and with that change, looking for a motion to approve the December 9th City Council Workshop Minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fay.
Second.
Seconded by Cahill. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Mayor?
Yes.
Is there any reason those RFPs couldn't be put on the website, Bobby?
Sure, I can put them on there.
For full transparency?
We'll have the RFPs on the website as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. And then we'll go back to Resolution 19-
I apologize. I think it might just be a typo. Resolution designating the 2019 polling place? Is this the 2020 polling place?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
That's it.
So with that correction, to change it to the 2020 polling place, looking for a motion to approve Resolution 19-1216-01, 2020 polling place.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
I'll second.
Seconded by DeLong. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right. Next item of business is December accounts payable.
Yes, just to get out ahead of this here a little bit, City Council, we did have some expenditures on some diesel and unleaded gas. And some of that is that people's service is directed, you know, by me to drive our vehicles at some times. Want to get use on the vehicle so it doesn't sit throughout the entire time as well. They have their own pickup, but they still have to use some of our public works vehicles to get some of the jobs done. So that's some of the costs there that you see there on that unleaded and diesel. I think there's a $300 diesel charge and an $80 unleaded gas charge.
In UFC?
Yeah. Also, on that note, we did have a $50 solicitor's refund on that. So we had a solicitor come forward, try moving his application through. And I want to talk to Sharon on this one and verify if he actually got through the background check. He actually eventually got denied by the chief and I because he went outside of his guidelines before approval in the city of Independence, saying he had a solicitor's permit from the city of Maple Plain when he didn't. And so, the chief and I were not too happy about that. And so, instead of having a mark on his record, he decided to withdraw his application. And so, I don't know if he did get that background check or not done. And if he did, he will not get a refund. If he didn't, then he can get a refund. There's no staff time expelled on that deal. But yeah, just wanted to make note of that.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying those things. Any other questions regarding December accounts payable?
I do. Bobby, Hennepin County Accounts Receivable First Half Assessment Fees for 2020?
Correct.
$10,250. Is it possible to move that to January so that 2020 first half assessment fees don't end up on our books in 2019?
I'd have to look, but I think we pay always the first half in the previous year and then the second half in the next year is how it's split in our budget. I'd have to look, but I think that's how we do it and how we have historically done it. We can't move it like right now to next year.
I know we pay West Hennepin Public Safety a month in advance, so we're paying, we're paying Januaries in December, but we always do it a month in advance. But I just thought if we're going to have three, excuse me, we're going to have three half assessments in 2019, it's going to artificially inflate.
Yeah, I'd have to look and see. But I'm pretty sure we always pay the first half at the end of this, of the year. So they get paid in advance there.
Okay.
So you're still only going two a year?
Yeah, still only doing two a year.
Okay, that's fine. And then, in Terra Mark?
Yep.
And I recall having this conversation maybe earlier in the year, but there's $1,548 in fees for the comp plan.
Yep.
It looks as though that's coming out of the general budget. Isn't that money, isn't that money, isn't that grant money that we received?
It covers that. There isn't like an expenditure account with the grant money in it. So the grant money comes in as a revenue, which it is posted as a revenue.
So we got the, we got the grant money in total?
Oh, okay. We just have to pay Mark and so it comes out of that.
I understand.
But it's 30.
So it's not like escrow?
Correct, it's not, no.
Okay.
We get that money. It's a pretty good deal.
Yeah, that's all I had.
Bobby, on all of these consultant bills, how do we reconcile those to the end of the year? As an example, the planner is back six months ago.
Oh, I know.
How do we make sure that all of those are put into 2019 when this is our last meeting of 2019?
So what I typically do at the end of the year is that, and I've done this every year I think I've been here, is that I've sent an email out at the end of December with an accounts payable on that. It gives City Council the time to review any of those bills. And if there's any questions, we ask for them, but we have to pay those at the end of December. We can't just wait until January at our business meeting to do that. So, what I would ask actually from City Council, and this is a practice we should be doing from now on, is that, like I said, I will send every bill that we get by the end of the year to City Council via email. But in addition to approving December's accounts payable, it's your giving staff the authority to file a accounts payable at the end of December to close out 2019. Again, I will send every bill to Council, so if there's any questions or clarification, we can pull it and then deal with the consequences in January, as much as we don't like that. But that's how we would, that's how we would do it. So, what I am going to ask for from Council tonight is, in addition to December's accounts payable, providing staff the authority to run a payroll at the end of December after City Council has reviewed it.
As long as somehow those are then also added into January's council meetings so the public can see those.
Yeah, I can post it online too. Yep. That's fine.
Seems, seems we have the same discussion every December.
With what again?
With not having a full representation of an individual's invoices.
Oh, yeah. And it's the same conversation I have with him every year about getting those invoices to us. So, yeah.
Councilmember DeLuca made a comment a couple of years ago that if they don't get in, they don't get paid.
I think that would, as much as we'd love to send that type of a message, I don't think that's a, that's a good deal to do. But I understand the frustration there completely.
All right. Any further questions? Okay, with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve the December accounts payable and to also give the staff authority to do accounts payable through 2019, emailing them to Council and then making sure they're included on the website in January for the public to see as well.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
Second.
Seconded by Fay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our next item of business this evening is our administrative reports, which have all been submitted ahead of time for us to review. We have the City Engineer December Month Report, the City Planner December Monthly Report, West Hennepin November Monthly Report, City Administration December Monthly Report, and Public Works November Monthly Report. Any questions on those submitted reports?
Just a quick thank you to Public Works for leaving garbage cans in the parks, at least one, because they do get used. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on our administrative reports? With that, looking for a motion to accept all administrative reports as submitted.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
I'll second.
Seconded by DeLong. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Great, motion carries. Next items are our new business items. And tonight, we will start with the Iron Exchange 2020 liquor license.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. As you may remember, actually, a few months ago, we did approve one of these licenses already. And again, anytime we do a liquor license or a tobacco license, they're a calendar year license. So that's why you're seeing this liquor license come back, is we approved a liquor license through the end of this year with Iron Exchange Brewery a few months ago, as they are in a new establishment here in town. But now, we need to look at their 2020 liquor license and for the brewery. Now, one thing you will notice is that I prorated the fees. I felt that was an appropriate thing to do, given that we just collected this large chunk of fees from them a few months ago, to prorate that to what it would be on a monthly basis for then 2020. So, instead of a $5,250 on-sale license, I'm charging $437.50. And then, I'm also charging a application renewal fee, a Sunday on-sale liquor fee as well, and brought the total up to $662.50. I went on my own and did this. So this is something that we'll need City Council approval for. But I felt that this was the right thing to do with the new establishment, given that they just paid this high amount of fees a few months ago.
So we're prorating 2020s?
Yeah, because they paid in full all of these fees in 19 and they used it for a month. They opened last week. And so, instead of double dipping and charging them another, you know, $6,000-plus for two weeks of use in 19, I prorated that to reflect that they used, you know, they paid 11 months' worth out of their 12 already, when they paid a couple of months ago for that liquor license. So, I think this is a fair thing to do. You know, we're charging them according to our fee schedule over what we have set per month. Typically, this would be something that I would look at doing with any new liquor establishment. But I just think it's the right thing to do here.
Well, I hear what you're saying, and I agree. Why didn't we do this on the 2019 fees? This, to me, makes it complicated.
You know, I-
I could see prorating 2019, but now we're prorating 2020. And when we go back, that could get messy.
Well, I, it's, it's really, it doesn't matter either way on that from a finance standpoint or from any, any type of liquor license standpoint, there's no, there's no harm to that in any way, however you do it. Theoretically, we could have done it in 2019. We didn't. We took the upfront total amount. And so, you know, that put us in this position, which-
But you were also very clear with them. You told us that you had a conversation-
I did.
-with them regarding that.
I did.
You do recall that.
Oh, yeah.
And I did-
Because I was caught off guard then that they were paying the whole-
You know, I honestly do think, Mayor and City Council, that, I mean, I can go back and probably get the full amount for a liquor license fee. I'm just saying this is a proposal that I have with this liquor license for the Council, because I believe it is the right thing to do.
And while I agree with that, it was the right thing to do, in my opinion, in 2019. That's where my confusion comes in.
For clarity, would it be possible to charge them the amount in refund, the amount for 2019, just so it's clear on the books? Because in a couple of years, there might not be any part, one who's part of this conversation to look back as to why we did that. So just to make it clear on our books as to when the refund actually occurred?
I'm sorry, I'm not following.
So prorate 2019?
Yep.
Credit them back to 2019.
Fifty, $5,500 or whatever it is.
Charge the full amount for 2020, just so that on the books, you know, on the applications, that it's all clean. So that, you know, so that in a couple of years, if we look back, why didn't we only charge them $430, you know?
Because really, we're charging $662.50 for 2019.
Sure.
But 2020 would have been well over five grand. So, it may just, it seems very messy to me.
Yeah, I don't disagree with the principle, but-
Yeah, right. I agree with, I agree with the proration.
It's the right thing to do.
Yeah. Are we concerned about like a revenue showing up type of deal in the budget? Because-
I think we're concerned about the optics of, at least I am.
Sure.
Establishment one looks at their 2020 fee and they see a $400. The next one sees $5,000. When in essence, over the 14 months, it all evens out.
Correct.
But I do like the proposal you're bringing, the correct 19, full payment for 20.
Sure.
It ends up being a wash with the business owner.
But it needs to just be looked at.
I am, I am in favor of that. I am also in favor of this proration. I am, I was in favor of prorating his liquor license in 2019. But I also want to go on record as saying, I think the proration is the right thing to do with any business. But if a liquor establishment should give up, cease operations mid-year, under no circumstances are we refunding any unused.
Correct.
So if we're prorating on the front end, make it clear that we are not prorating on the back end.
Yeah, no, like I said, this is not a, this is not a policy that I'm following.
I understand. It's just the right thing to do.
I just think it's the right thing to do.
I agree.
But yeah, I agree. You know, John, it's, once you pay that amount, there's, you know, that's the amount.
Whereas, this is a precedence that is being established.
Correct, for new organizations or new businesses in town. If they start mid-year.
Yep.
Okay.
And only in this.
Correct.
Okay.
So with that, if there's no more discussion, I'll make a motion then, that we refund the proration rate for 2019 and charge them the full amount for 2020.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right. Motion carries. The next item of business is the Liquor Depot 2020 Tobacco License.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. We have one tobacco license in town, and this is for Liquor Depot. This is a renewal. I believe Liquor Depot has been selling tobacco products since their existence. And so, this is our lone tobacco license. They went through the background checks. They also, as the city is aware, this is a liquor store within the city of Maple Plain. It's not a, you know, a restaurant or anything along those lines. And so, with that, I'm looking for an approval to approve the application renewal tobacco license for Liquor Depot of Maple Plain at 5020 Highway 12. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Okay. Looking for that motion to approve the Liquor Depot 2020 Tobacco License.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Fay.
Second.
Seconded by Cahill. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next item of business is Resolution 19-1216-02, Fire Relief Annual Year of Service Increase. I'm going to turn that over to staff.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. This is a resolution that we have seen gone forward to the City Council now for the fifth year, because we are in the fifth year of, are coming into our fifth year of a five-year plan that was agreed upon by the City Council in 2014, 2015. And it talks about a increase to the year of service amount per firefighter. So in Maple Plain, you have to have at least 10 years for partial retirement, 20 years for full benefit retirement. And what that means is that there's a dollar amount out of the relief association fund that each firefighter is then entitled to. And what we are looking at now is a change from $2,800 per year of service when retirement hits to $3,000. And so, historically, in the years past, the prior four years, it'd been $100. But the plan outlined for this fifth year to have a $200 increase. Attending the fire relief meetings, I know Councilmember Fay and myself have attended those, I do think this is an appropriate move, based on the fact of just being competitive too with other surrounding fire departments. And I think this is the right step to do is to increase this, as we are all very thankful, I know too, towards our firefighters and all the wonderful work that they do. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions pertaining to this resolution and increase.
And this was part of the plan that we already agreed to?
Correct. Yep, that is correct.
Any questions for staff? All right then. With that, I'm looking for a motion to approve Resolution 19-1216-02, Fire Relief Annual Year of Service Increase.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
Second.
Seconded by DeLuca. And this is a resolution, so it will be by roll call.
Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLong.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLuca.
Aye.
Mayor Moskowski.
Abstaining because it directly affects my family.
And Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
The ayes have it four to one with one abstained.
Next item of business is another resolution, 19-1216-03, 2020 Fire Department Budget.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. The good news is, there's a flat budget in front of you. So, there was no increase from last year's budget to, or this year's budget to next year's budget. It remains flat. So it's the same budget amount as we had previously at $444,643. This was brought to the Fire Commission, where Councilmember Fay and Cahill sit on, and was approved by the Fire Commission. At this time, at the end of the year in December, we always bring that resolution to City Council. This is not a, this resolution is not brought to the county or anything, but is a record for the city. And so, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or any specifics you may have regarding the fire department budget for 2020.
Any questions for staff or Fire Commissioners? Okay. With that, I'm looking for a motion to approve Resolution 19-1216-03, the 2020 Fire Department Budget.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
I'll second.
Seconded by Fay. And again, this is a resolution, so it will be by roll call.
Councilmember DeLong.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLuca.
Aye.
Mayor Moskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
The ayes have it five to zero.
Next item of business is another resolution, Resolution 19-1216-04, the 2020 City General Fund Budget.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. What you have before you is a resolution that is required to be passed at the end of December pertaining to what we are setting our 2020 General Fund Budget at. I can tell you that our revenues are a little bit lower than they were in 2019, based off of some of the projects that are going through. At $1,677,800, our expenditures are at $1,446,585. And our other financing sources, which would be transfers to either park funds or capital improvement dollars that we have set aside, is $231,215. All in all, our general fund is actually going down 0.026%, which again is really great news, as our operating general fund is, I believe, lower than it was in 2008. So, I mean, that's, that's a pretty good track record right there, that we've really tightened things up over the last 11 years. And yeah, we have to, we have to approve this resolution at the end of December and submit it to the county, as well as our levy resolution, which will be coming after this. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions pertaining to the general fund budget for the city of Maple Plain.
Any questions for staff? Okay. I am looking for a motion to approve Resolution 19-1216-04, the 2020 City General Fund Budget.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? And this is a resolution, so it will be roll call vote.
Councilmember DeLuca.
Aye.
Mayor Moskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLong.
Aye.
The ayes have it five to zero.
And one more resolution this evening, 19-1216-05, the 2020 City Levy.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Before you is the property tax levy for the city of Maple Plain. Like the general fund budget, this is a resolution that is required to be approved upon at the end of December. At the end of September, we approved a resolution for the city tax levy, as well as the general fund budget levy, or budget, general fund budget. And at that time, those numbers cannot increase, but they are allowed to decrease or remain the same. Our total tax levy has gone up by 0.045%. It's a little over $600, I believe, to my knowledge. And the reasoning for that is just debt service. So, we took on another bond in 2018 A Bonds. There was some, we took that bond on, but we actually actually had a increase in our 2012 A General Obligation Bonds that went up $4,830. Everywhere else, we actually went down. So we saw an increase of $998 that has an impact then on our total tax levy. So, that's what happened here, why there is that slight increase. But otherwise, I would say that this is a very responsible, like I said, tax levy. I think the residents of Maple Plain are very, very lucky to have a responsible council like this. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions pertaining to this resolution.
Any questions regarding the city levy? Okay, hearing none. Then I am looking for a motion to, for Resolution 19-1216-05, the 2020 City Levy.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
Second.
Seconded by Fay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. And it's roll call vote again.
Mayor Moskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Fay.
Aye.
Councilmember Cahill.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLong.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLuca.
Enthusiastically aye.
The ayes have it five to zero.
And our last item for new business this evening is the fire department job description. And I'm going to turn that over to staff for summary.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Before you is the Maple Plain Fire Department Job Description. And what we're talking about here is a policy change that would shift the requirements to be a firefighter. Currently, the firefighting requirements are established that you must be 18 years of old, 18 years of age, have a high school diploma or GED equivalent. You have to perform all the physical duties and shall meet medical requirements to be a firefighter. You must pass the psychological evaluation, possess a valid Minnesota driver's license, and you must reside within the Maple Plain Fire District, or currently, it states five minutes legal driving time to the Maple Plain Fire Station. Something that became very clear to the fire chief and myself, we had an applicant come forward that does not qualify these requirements, as they're currently laid out in this policy. And after reviewing the drive time of five minutes legal driving time to the Maple Plain Fire Station, and reviewing then other departments and their response time allowed to get to the fire station, we noticed we are by far the most conservative number. We're at five minutes. City, our Loretto Fire Department, the Delano Fire Department, they're 12 minutes. We're at five. Now, what becomes abundantly clear is that we currently have 22 firefighters on our fire department. About half of them can walk out because they already got their 20 years in. So the concern here is a recruitment- So the concern here is a recruitment. This is a recruitment policy. Are we missing out on potential firefighters that could join our department based off of this five-minute drive time to the, to the fire station? And that's a concern. That's why we're evaluating this, is this is a recruitment policy tool that we want to make sure that, you know, we're at the same playing field as other departments to get talent into our, our, our fire department and serve as employees of the city of Maple Plain. And so that's why I'm bringing this forward tonight, is to, I'm proposing a change, along with the support of the fire chief, in moving from a five-minute response time to a ten-minute response time. It's not the, it's not twelve minutes, but it, it does open up our window a little bit more from five to ten in potential firefighter recruiting. So that's what I have before the city council tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, like I had mentioned, this is not only my recommendation, but also the recommendation of the fire chief. And with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments for staff?
A comment? The, the rule says, or the, the job description says you must live within the fire district or be within five minutes.
Correct.
My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there are places within our fire district where you currently could be living in excess of five minutes away from the station.
That is correct.
So I think the, the use of five minutes, as we discussed, seems like it's inconsistent. So therefore, that I support the idea of ten minutes, because you could be eight-plus minutes already by living in the fire district, but be outside the five-minute window.
That's correct, Councilmember DeLuca. Yeah, there are some areas within our fire district where it does take longer than five minutes to get to the fire station already. So there, there is an inconsistency with how the policy is currently written. Like I said, I think the major concern, and a lot of, a lot of cities are facing this, is do we have enough firefighters to continue the volunteer firefighting model that we're operating underneath? This policy change helps us continue to do that at a longer period of time. That's what I believe.
And we need to give you the tools to recruit a fire department.
Correct.
Any other comments? In full transparency, I will be voting no this evening, tonight, on this. While I agree that we want to recruit and that we are very restrictive, I think the timing of this is unfortunate. We had on our agenda and planned to look at all policies in twenty twenty, and I feel like this is being pushed through. So I just want to communicate why I will be voting no this evening. All right. Hearing no other discussion, I am looking for a motion to approve the proposed change to call time must reside within the Maple Plain Fire District or ten minutes of legal driving time to the Maple Plain Fire Station. Looking for a motion to approve that change.
So moved.
Moved by Cahill.
I'll second.
Second by DeLong. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion carries. Next item of business tonight is council reports and other business. And why don't we start with Councilmember Cahill?
I had the opportunity to attend the Northwest Hennepin League of Municipalities, where we had presenters from both the state fire marshal office and the auditor's office there to discuss trends within fire departments. They talked about structures and how many cities are now combining or consolidating as a way to become more sustainable. They talked about the different options for pension plans. They also spoke about different grants and resources that are available, and I know our city will be looking into what we can use there. And just general good discussions about the different problems cities are facing right now. So we're not alone in our discussions in this area about sustainability. We all love our fire departments and we want to keep them as excellent as they are, but we have to find a sustainable way to do it. So really good conversation. Also had a nice time at View Santa, and thank you to the Historical Society for lovely, warm cider and cookies that kept us warm that night, so, and to, obviously, the fire and police and everyone who put it on. So it's always a great event.
I have a meeting, a police commission meeting this week, but I have not done anything else this week or this month, so that's all I have.
I have no report this month, other than to say, at the end of the year, during the holiday season, it has been an absolute joy to work with the four of you and with Bobby this year, and thank you. I think we are making progress as a city. I think we're making strides at being transparent with our, with our community. And keeping our taxes the way we have has been something that I think our residents are reaping the value of.
Thank you. Councilmember Fay.
I continue to represent the city, the mayor, at Rotary on Thursday mornings. I attended the View Santa event at the water tower. Many May, or many workshops this month. The Pioneer Sarah Creek Watershed Management Commission meeting was canceled for December, as it normally is. And it's looking as though we'll be putting a Party in the Park planning event, the first one of the year, for shortly after the first year. I was opposed to it, but I am now leaning towards keeping it as the first Saturday in June, which would run in conflict with the first weekend of graduation parties and, and such. But I just think pushing it to after Memorial Day, before June, risks adverse weather, too early in the season, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm going to push towards that, and the idea would be, if we can agree on it as a planning group, planning commission, we can get it into the monthly newsletter so that we begin the promotion of it with the quarterly newsletter that we put out mid-January. That's it.
And just to be clear, that's Party in the Park.
What did I say?
Planning Commission, and that we're also recruiting volunteers.
Yes.
The Planning Committee for Party in the Park.
The, not the Planning, we have a, yes, not, not, not Maple Plain Planning Commission, the Planning Committee.
For Party in the Park.
For Party in the Park, yes, after the first of the year.
And we're always looking for volunteers if you're interested in that. All right, thank you. I would like to thank everyone for covering for me for the month of December. I have been out on taking some family time to help take care of my husband as he recovers. So thank you, team, for picking up the pieces and covering all my meetings for me. I appreciate it. And then also, just on behalf of the city, want to wish everyone a happy and safe holiday season, and we'll see you in twenty twenty. With that, I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
I'll second.
Second by DeLong. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the meeting is adjourned at eight oh two.
Man, I don't know where that coffee-